I'd ask that you please rise as Pastor Tom Peterson leads us in our invocation.
Oh, mighty God, we have another year coming and we look back on the year that has gone by and the building blocks that have been put in place. And Lord, as we look into the future, there is a vision. And Lord, we ask for your wisdom and your sense of perseverance. Lord, as we work that through, I thank you for each one here and their leadership roles and their love for this community. Lord, we ask your blessing on Fergus Falls. We love this place to live and to work. So I commit this meeting to you, Lord. You gave us two ears and a mouth and, Lord, may we listen to one another and may we laugh with one another as we work things out. To you be the glory. Bless this community. Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. It's 5:30, January 2nd, 2018, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And Andrew, is there anything to add other than the... Mine hasn't updated and maybe others are. Is there a second open forum request?
Yes, there is a second open forum request from Bert Whitcomb talking about the Lake Alice neighborhood. Otherwise, the agenda is as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. There are no public hearings, awards to bid, or petitions and communications this evening, so that brings us to the open forum. And the first item on the open forum is a request from Mr. John Strout. There he is, John. Wants to talk to us about the downtown riverfront master plan. John?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmen members. It's hard to believe it's another year gone by. We're already into 2018. I recently read the article in a paper about the downtown riverfront master plan. And there was a few things I wanted to address. Approximately seven years ago, Gordon Haduchovich and a few members of the community here, myself included, got together to do a study on the dairy property, the flower mill, and whether or not to rezone Lincoln Avenue for commercial from residential. And kind of to see what could be done with that properties down there. At the time, the city didn't own the properties, as we still don't. Mr. Chaney from Minneapolis still owns the properties, I believe. And so, there was a lot of hard effort put into that. And we came to the conclusion that it shouldn't be changed as a zoning. And since then, many years have passed, and the city has took on a lot of different projects, a lot of big projects. We've had the hockey arena, we've had the police station, and now we're working on a public library expansion. We also have to reconsider or consider what to do with the RTC. That's been an ongoing thing for many years. I've been a part of that myself since the beginning, trying to figure out a good solution. My question is, when I heard that we had spent $135,000 for consulting on what to do for the riverfront project, I felt that that was money that could have been used somewhere else. It seems to me that we don't have the funds to buy the dairy or the flower mill because it hasn't happened now for... I mean, it's been many years that it's been empty. And there's been some ideas, but nothing concrete as to what to do with that property. So I asked the city council, why don't we purchase these properties first if we're going to actually do something with it instead of spending money on consultants for a project that I believe will never happen? It hasn't happened yet. I don't foresee anything in the future with the issues we have at hand with the RTC, what to do with that, where the money is going to come up with, or how to deal with that situation. We also have many empty buildings on the west side of town, up by the mall, that we could try to figure out a way to incorporate a business to come in or to fill those places. Recently, I'm sure you all know about the Target building closing, and so there's another issue that we need to address as a city. And so, over the years, I've been told that we couldn't open Lake Alice skating rink in the past. Some of you were here for many years where I argued to the warming house, and I was told by the city administrator, we couldn't afford it, it wasn't in the budget. I asked how much, it was like $10,000. Well, thankfully, today we have the skating rink open, and a lot of young families are able to use that. But it goes back to where we spend our money. I know the budget is important, and the city only has so much to work with. So what I'm asking is if Bill Somner or somebody that could do this would give me the information as to what we've spent on consultants for the last, say, five years on projects that never became finished or never got done. And I'm guessing, I bet it's going to be close to a quarter million dollars, which I feel could be spent somewhere else on more important projects. So I asked the council if we could be a little more careful on consulting firms on projects that we aren't sure are going to get done. And like I say, the dairy and the flower mill has been for sale for many, many years. With what we have going, I don't think we have the funds to purchase them and to develop these ideas. I mean, it would be great if we could, but the dollar only goes so far. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Your Honor, just to correct, the mill is actually owned by a private developer that got purchased 18 months, two years ago, from Chaney.
Oh, okay, I was not informed of that.
So that one has transitioned to somebody out of Fargo.
Sure. But I talked to you, Mr. Hicks, and the last time I was here about yield signs on some of the intersections, and I was told we couldn't afford those because it wasn't in the budget or it was too costly. Over on my street on Vasa, there is a street sign now that'll have to be replaced because...
Your mayor, we're getting away from the subject.
Oh, sorry.
And I appreciate your comments, but I want to just make one clarification. There's not a yield sign in town that doesn't exist because we can't afford it. Just make perfectly clear that. I mean, there's...
That's what I was told, but that's fine.
Okay, well, we can follow up on that, but just, I mean, I'll make that guarantee that there's not a yield sign that doesn't exist because of...
Sure.
I mean, if there's engineering reasons, that's another thing, but... And I can talk to you personally too, John, and I can get you some of this information and give you a little bit more of the background on some of these projects. I'd be happy to do that.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strout. Thanks, John. Next item under the open forum is Albert Whitcomb about Lake Alice.
Thank you. And I got a little something that, thank Brian, the engineering, that I didn't get into your packets, and you don't need to look at it specifically now, but I'm just going to refer to the moment. And the gentleman before me, I'm Bert Whitcomb, Albert Whitcomb, 1319 North Park Street, Allo Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm a segue to what the first gentleman said. We've got ice on Lake Alice, and it wasn't a big... I mean, it's there, and the whole thing's going to happen, is that right, Mr. Ruffer? And it's going to be smooth this year instead of push.
Can't vote just on the quality of the ice.
The ice is good, I believe. Anyhow, it's always an interesting thing. So what I would like to talk to you about mostly, and I guess you've got this in your packet, and that is the notes from the Lake Alice Neighborhood meeting on December 5th. And if you haven't got that, I'll reference a few times. And I think that I'm going to be sharing stuff with you because some of you may know a little bit about the DNR report and what changed, but some of you may not know a lot because it hasn't been official business, and I guess here I am, not official. Okay. So Mr. Hicks came both in November and December and presented to the Lake Alice Neighborhood. The summer meeting, we had quite a number of people, and it was about the DNR proposal that was made, and it came back, and there was a number of changes that were suggested in the proposal in order for it to happen, and so it's kind of on hold. And so, Mr. Hicks brought a lot of real interesting ideas. We had other, a couple of presenters. We had Karen Terry and a staff member of hers from the state also talk about some issues which are covered in there. This isn't a way to share and communicate with you guys among other things. And so, there's communication from that. So right now, I'm going to refer to, first of all, some things. I'm looking for some things from you guys, looking for some response and some support, money, that all that whole same thing. The number B or letter B on the top of the list, this also, the list was also showed up in the newspaper article, physically identify storm drains that go into Lake Alice. And actually, the piece of paper that I shared you, the map on the back shows you all the storm drains that go into Lake Alice, and they're substantial. This was actually one of the cool revelations of our December meeting, just how integrally involved we are in anything that goes onto the ground which goes into Lake Alice, because pretty much everything on that back map in the yellow line goes directly to Lake Alice, any water that goes onto the ground. So we wanted to physically identify those things. We've got some support from the Alternative Learning Center, the high school. They've got a, what do they call them, parasol artist coming, and so Mrs. Tool offered that as a possibility of doing that. And all these things, of course, require city staff and time. And so, I'm looking for a resolution on these things, I guess, trying to get more official conversation, hopefully at our next meeting, your next meeting, which is not Monday but Tuesday, you probably all knew that, now I just discovered that. And so, what that would entail is everything, every storm drain, and you'll see there are a significant number of them in that area, it says this is going to Lake Alice, and just a little bit of larger information, that same thing happens all over the city. A lot of the neighborhoods drain into a wetland, which then goes into the river, I mean, all that case, but... So that would be this water awareness in greater length. The next thing that we're interested in, which would be D, which involves a lot of work, and I'm going to refer to that a couple of times, and that is the rain garden concept. Because again, you have to think about this DNR plan that's not happening right now, and it's time to figure out another one. And so, that required, I don't have, I could spend a lot of time talking about rain gardens do not want to, really want to have an education program soon for the city. I had planned on having it on Tuesday because you were going to have a resolution and pass it on Monday, but that's not going to happen, so we'll have to change that a little bit. But anyhow, you know, spring's coming, and this is really our first line of response is to keep the water that falls on the ground from going directly into Lake Alice. That's number one, and all doable. Okay? And the third thing, which is considerably more complicated, would be kind of covering C, D, and E, and that's education and communications, which is a problem or challenge, or we want to look at it for everything that goes on in city government, talking with the community. And just a little overview about that, that circle on that brochure is 350 households through lots of effort, through several mailings, which was, which were paid for by St. James Church, which has been very supportive of this, and some major events, including the block party, which was very successful, happened in August, and many of you council people were there, a lot of good dialogue. I have managed to attract about 60 of the 350 households. Now, that may be great, but in order to do some of the things we're talking about, everybody needs to know that something's happening. Whether everybody wants to be educated about it, that's the freedom of choice, but everybody doesn't even know what's happening. And again, that's all across the state, the city, all the community. So that's a real big challenge. Now, there's a lot of ways of dealing with it. We've got kind of an advantage at the Lake Alice Neighborhood, and a lot of people that live there walk around the neighborhood a lot. But there's a problem, and that is that there is the city code thing about leaf littering. And I know there was really good reasons for that, I got it, but we would really like to go and communicate with our neighbors by bringing pieces of paper on and leaving them at their door if they're not there and start developing that way. That'd be a really good way for us to communicate. And so, that's, we bumped in this before, Andrew has talked with us about that, and it's a real, but little bit big issue. And the next thing, which comes, it's another, and I don't know a lot about it, but there is a city code about wild plants, which is a challenge for, if you're going to do any natural planting, which is, ends up being another really big and important issue in communication with the Lake Alice Neighborhood. And because, what would you say, visual is very important, and we know that we need to have some way to stop the water. And rain gardens can be creative, and that's where the education, again, needs to come in a whole lot. So I think I've taken up at least some of my time, and...
You're a little bit over, Bert.
Well, thank you for letting me know. Two last things. I would like to really acknowledge Karen Terry, is she still here? She is, there she is, who has, she works for the state, she's not asking for money at all, that's not why I'm asking this. She's been very helpful with us, very helpful. And at least an acknowledgement from the city in some way, this is, I guess you could say free help, but it's much better than free help, I gotta say. Karen Terry, thank you very much for her support. And the other thing is the engineering department and Matt Harrington, who's responsible for that brochure that I gave you, and he started it, and he needs input, and it's a great idea, and this is that communication business that happens again. And in case you didn't know, I mean, I'm just, this is my own words, but Brian and his staff member Matt have done it without us being on the budget. And I want to thank, I mean, maybe it's their business, but it's stretching out a little bit more into that super important communication and education process that we need to do. Any questions? Thank you very much.
The gentleman who was on the screen when we were there, what was his name?
Sharah Masadi.
Okay. Because he had said something about, he didn't feel that the taller grasses or anything that would really stop the geese and everything else, but he did recommend people bringing their dogs down there. Now, we've been looking for a long time, people have been bringing up left and right that they're looking for a place for a dog park. Now, would that be a possibility of putting it down there? Just get a natural...
So what you're doing, Mr. Thompson, is awesome, and this is the kind of communication, and this ain't the space, because I've already used up more time than I'm supposed to, but it's exactly what he's doing is what needs to happen, is to have an open forum about the summer. It happened a little bit at our block party, and it was great when it happened. Sorry, yeah, somebody else said something, yeah. Sit down, I got it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bert. Karen, yes.
Thank you. The long grasses, it's true that the research is showing it doesn't really help for the geese, but it does have a lot of other benefits, but not for the geese.
Anthony, do you have anything to add?
I got it.
Time's up.
Only that this is a project that's moving forward. I mean, obviously, we're still, we're still actually awaiting an official response from the DNR, which supposedly it's on the top of the pile now to be answered, you know, which would officially reject our proposals. But I think it's, you know, what we're trying to do is there's some baby steps and get some things accomplished, and, you know, education, not just on this watershed, but, you know, literally, and I think this is something that we ultimately would like to hope to send out with like the utility bills and probably, you know, if we could, make it sort of, you know, a quarterly thing where, you know, yeah, we start with Lake Alice, but I don't think people necessarily appreciate, you know, the drain that sits just outside their front door, where it actually goes and ends up. And, you know, and actually, you know, there are actually laws that say you shouldn't mow your grass to go into the gutter so it goes down the stormwater drains. I mean, it's the Minnesota Pollution Control and a DNR ruling that you can't do that. So I think there's some education, you know, throughout the entire city about what you can and what you can't do, and reaching out so that we use different fertilizers, and then, you know, we start to work on some of these rain gardens where we can. And the gentleman that Karen mentioned, I mean, he, I think, no, it was, maybe it was yourself that mentioned about in one community in one of the suburbs of Minneapolis, how rain gardens have truly altered the clarification of water going into a water body. So I think there's some other things like that we can do that, you know, would save the spending, you know, $10 million on rerouting water around Lake Alice.
Is there an opportunity for the city to partner with, maybe with the organization Karen, to sponsor a, and I think, were you talking about this, Bert, rain garden?
Ultimately, that's kind of where we want to try and go. One of the things that we'd probably like to look at is identifying where would be the best locations for rain gardens to capture some of this kind of runoff water. You know, there's some places where would have more significance than others, and that...
So you mentioned the dairy, the triangle.
Yep, and I mean, one of them actually is, it would be kind of like that triangle that sits in front of dairy land, and, you know, that's actually a focal point, a focal point of the, you know, there's a lot of traffic goes by it, and so making that like a rain garden. And there is funding from varied sources to assist in doing that, you know, between, you know, the USDA and obviously, you know, potentially the city parks and wrecks, and then, you know, private donors.
And then just a workshop to teach people about it.
And, I mean, one of the things that I think, one of the things we talked about was trying to get the master gardeners to kind of also put on something on one of their, you know, their annual event about rain gardens, too.
Can you guys talk about a timing, like when would, coming back to the, like, it seemed to me we could come back to committee of the hall for a discussion and then action?
I think we could.
February?
Yeah, we could work towards February, it's been something we could do. Brian's nodded his head. Bert's, Bert has an extremely, Albert has an extremely aggressive travel schedule, you know. Yeah, he's, no, he's a man who's wanted in this next two months.
We can work, and we can work that into the schedule of one of the committee of the halls, is that...
But he's got good elves.
Natural Resources Committee would be a natural fit.
We do kind of have, do I just stand up here again?
Jim, what do you think?
There is this natural goal, spring. If something happens...
Sure.
The spring, right, right. So that, again, I think that if I'm understanding this right, we can all have these ideas, and the engineering department can be supportive to a certain extent, but actually, we're kind of just pushing this business into process, and we want to be more official about it or more nurtured by it, more supported by it. Am I making sense?
Not sure.
I think Brian is, are you shaking your head in a positive way?
Say it again, Bert, what are you asking for, what are you asking, you're asking if we bring to committee?
I think he wants to know that it's supported by the council to do something in the spring.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, we as a citizen are, this is, this is our motivation, as far as, as far as city business right here, you know? We can be all excited, and we're just going to be standing here until it gets to be a larger commitment. Thanks.
I think it'd be appropriate to bring to committee.
We'll get someone together for committee of the hall, it won't be the next one.
First one in February, hopefully. Okay. Thank you, Anthony, thank you, Bert, thank you, Karen.
Make a resolution then, CD, and then we'll go forward.
Under the consent agenda, there's a list of items in your packet, they're also on the screen. If anyone has anything they'd like to talk about individually, we can pull that off. If not, I would look for a resolution to approve the consent agenda. I will offer that, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Here, yes.
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 Yes. Resolution is approved. There are no items for us to discuss under ordinances and resolutions. Under presentation of claims, we have claims tonight in the amount of $806,636.42, and if there's any questions, my next director, Bill Sun, will be happy to answer them, I'm sure. If not, tomorrows.
Second.
Thank you. Scott, Tom, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. There are no items under the board committee department or reports from administrative officers, hopefully there's any old business or any unfinished business, nor is there any new business. There's nothing to come before...
Your Honor, I'm going.
Tom?
Just a quick mention of the, the Lake Alice skating rink was mentioned earlier, that's January 14th is the annual noon Koana skating event on Lake Alice.
Is that a Sunday?
I believe so.
January 14th?
Yep.
Times yet?
Two to four.
Two to four.
There we go. Thank you, sir.
Are you a Koana?
Not yet.
Just kind of, I think it was a meeting in December, we'd mentioned about, obviously, committes and looking to staff to come back with some suggestions on incorporating or what we could. Can we get an update on that, or when do we think that we could see that?
Yeah, Your Honor, members, still a work in progress. We're hoping sometime in the first quarter of this year. As we continued to meet about it with the mayor and other members of staff, we realized that it wasn't, you know, necessarily the top priority, it wasn't urgent, but it was something that if we could incorporate over the next year, and at the very latest have it done by the beginning of next year when we assign committees, that would be sufficient. But as soon as possible, I guess, is the answer, but it hasn't been a priority.
Anything else to come before the council? If not, we'll adjourn, sign a die to our annual meeting. Which means we're going to meet again here real quick. Do you want to make those miscellaneous announcements at all? Sure, we can make those now. So the next meeting of the committee of the hall will be January 10th, Wednesday morning, 7:00 a.m., here, right here in the city council chambers. A live Christmas tree pickup will, is also on Wednesday, beginning Wednesday, January 10th, and everyone needs to have them out by 6:00. We're asking to have everyone have them out by 6:00 a.m. on the 10th, correct?
Yes.
And they'll pick, go until they're all picked up. January 15th, Monday, is a Martin Luther King Junior holiday, all city offices closed, which means our city council meeting will be Tuesday, January 16th. And then again, January 31st is the committee of the hall. And then again, January 31st is the committee of the hall, setting up your city council chambers. So, we've seen we've lost one council member, we'll wait, we'll give him back. Do we have to?
He might be done before he gets back. We can point him to anything we want, then.
There's four.
Right? Hands? Point him to like, you think?
I see.
We warned you.
It's not a close meeting, I think.
Like a DJ that...
What is it about?
Mayor.
It's just appointments.
Appointments for 2018.
Hey, when you're a DJ and you start losing people on the dance floor, you got to start doing something, there.
Yeah, you got your opportunity.
It's your chance.
I think so.
Everybody's going to start coming to our meetings.
Should we get Rod a golf club?
Put that out of the way. Or Rod.
All right, with that, we will call this meeting of, the first meeting of the new year of the Ferguson Falls City Council Order, roll call, please.
Thompson.
Here.
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 Yep.
Here.
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 First item of business is, we will need a motion to adopt the rules of procedure of the city council, city code section 2.52.
So, move.
Second, your honor.
And a motion is sufficient, correct? I'm assuming this is, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Second item on the agenda will be to, we'll need a motion to approve to select the 2018 acting mayor. Is there any nominations?
I'm quite happy to do it, yes. It's an onerous task, but I'll take a gamble.
I will nominate council member Hicks.
Second up.
There's a second?
Move nomination ceases.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Anthony. The next item is a motion to approve the mayor's council appointments, which you have a list of in front of you. So, the ones are as follows, secretary to the council is Lynn Olson, board of equalization from Ward 1, Darren Appert, from Ward 2, Scott Rachels, from Ward 3, Justin Arneson, from Ward 4, Anthony Hicks. The investment committee will consist of the city administrator, the finance director, assistant finance director, certified financial planner, and council member Rod Speedall. Labor management committee will consist of Darren Appert and Justin Arneson. The legislative committee will consist of the mayor, the city administrator, council member Tom Ruffer, and council member Justin Arneson. Tax levy committee will consist of the mayor, the city administrator, and council member Darren Appert. Airport advisory committee representative from the council will be Anthony Hicks, convention and visitors bureau representative from the council, Jim Fish. The EIC, the economic improvement commission representative will be Anthony Hicks, golf board member Scott Rachels, hockey association member Jim Fish, library board Ben Shire, peg access board Rod Speedall, senior citizens board Brent Thompson. Did I forget anybody?
Move we approve all of the mayor's appointments?
Second.
Thank you, Jim, thank you, Scott, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Item number five would be, we will need a resolution designating the Daily Journal as the 2018 legal publication.
Call for that, your honor.
Thank you, Justin, Anthony. Any discussion on the matter? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. We will also need a resolution designating the 2018 depositories, and there's a bunch of them, isn't there? Are they listed? Sorry, I don't have them.
They're listed.
I can read them real quickly, if you... Sure. I'm sorry, the, therefore be resolved, the city of Ferguson Falls, Minnesota, designate the following as official depositories for the city of Ferguson Falls, American Federal Bank, American National Bank, Bank of the West, Bremer Bank, Galleard Capital Management, Gate City Bank, League of Minnesota Cities 4M Fund, Bell State Bank and Trust, Security State Bank, US Bank, and Wells Fargo.
I'll...
Call for that, your honor.
I'll second.
And thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 Yes. And with that, I don't believe there's any further business to come before the council.
We will adjourn.
About thirty-five minutes is up.